Registered to speak.
Okay, next item.
Education, fair and consistent grading practices. Instructional and curriculum work groups have researched, piloted, and gathered feedback on highly effective grading practices. The purpose of this presentation is to share the work groups' process and implementation recommendations for establishing fair and consistent grading practices in grades pre-K through 12. This presentation is for the board's information.
Thank you and welcome. We're glad to have you here tonight. I know we've been training on this, so we're anxious to hear about it.
Okay, well, we're very excited to be here tonight. And one of the things that we wanted to share with you was the work that's been done so far to establish fair and consistent grading practices as well as a system for standards reference grading. Just a reminder, we work really hard to work with work groups and make sure that we have lots of different stakeholders involved in all of our decision-making processes. Work groups, their job is to, we have lots of different people from different departments and lots of teachers on these groups, and we work together to problem solve and come up with recommendations. Also, a reminder, we have multiple work groups in our district. And for the work that we're talking about tonight, the literacy and numeracy work group has, that's the work groups that have spent quite a deal, quite a bit of time on this. Also, a reminder that the literacy and numeracy work groups, their role is to provide recommendations for how we implement things and that those recommendations go to the academic leadership team who are the final decision-makers. So, a little bit of history about our project. We in our district adopt standards, we do this with the state. The state adopts standards and then we adopt those standards as well. So, we've used standards in the past for our grading purposes and we have very, we have focused on covering content. And a lot of our grading practices between schools and between classrooms vary. So, over the last few years, we've been working to narrow the standards that we're focused on at each grade level and to be, our goal is to have a very clear set of standards that we're working on that we can measure. And then, our other focus is to really work with teachers on what this looks like in the classroom as far as critical content. One example I wanted to share with you is, we know the research, Marzano's research, says that if we were to teach all of the standards in the Common Core, between kindergarten and 12th grade, it would take about 15,000 hours. In our day-to-day in grades K through 12, we actually have about, approximately about 9,000 hours. So, we know that we really, we're teaching our standards, but we want to be very focused on what those standards are that we're going to be measuring in our classrooms with students. So, this work has been going on and one of the things that we knew we needed to do was take the standards that were narrowing our focus and then also provide a reporting tool so that we could also, when we're measuring those standards, we would have a way to report those. So, we were looking at how do we implement standards reference reporting tools pre-K-12. So, what we did, we started a reporting progress task force group last summer and that group met to analyze what our current policies were, review recent research, and determine what practices, according to our listening sessions, did not necessarily align with our vision and mission. So, that group spent quite a bit of time doing that. And while they were looking at that research, they determined that we do have a need for fair and consistent grading practices in our classrooms and across our district. So, this reporting progress task force group made the recommendation of continuing that work throughout the year, continuing the process of problem solving, and they recommended that we increase our task force to include as many stakeholders as possible. So, at the beginning of the year, we, we shared the purpose of this task force and invited stakeholders in the whole district to join. This group has been meeting throughout the year and their, one of the first things that they did was they reviewed the work that we looked at in the summer. And then, we looked at the different practices that that summer team recommended, some of the practices that we might want to, we might want to have in our district, across the district. And so, then this extended task force looked at those practices and they talked about the different challenges and solutions we might, and all the different things we might need to think about moving forward. A few of those, the things that that extended task force looked at, they looked at a few practices as far as assessment, offering multiple assessment opportunities, how we assign zeros, and talking about how we, how we accept latent missing work and how we grade that. So, there were a few practices that we came up, that that summer group came up with. And then, what we did was we took them to all these different focus groups to get even more feedback and find out what else we needed to think about. So, we, we talked to the counselors, we've taught, we talked to department chairs, administrators, facilitators, and then, we even had the opportunity to talk to students at the super SAC. So, those were our focus groups. Then, what happened was all of the feedback was recorded and collected. And here's a few, these are a few documents that were used to collect that feedback. All of that information went to the literacy and numeracy work group. Those work groups really spent a lot of time evaluating the research, looking at what feedback there was, and then, they then offered some final recommendations for the academic leadership team to consider. So, three main recommendations were offered from these work groups. The first one was that we roll out the fair and consistent grading practices strategically along with any new reporting tool that we use that is aligned with our standards. At the beginning of this journey, we were thinking we needed a tool pre-K through 12. Now, we know from this feedback that we're really going to be focusing on adding additional grading practices as grade levels begin to use standards reference grading. The second recommendation was to provide very clear messages and specific examples for each grading practice that we implement. The original documents we were using just seemed to be, they didn't, they weren't very clear. So, that was one of their major recommendations. The third one was to provide adequate time for training of administrators, coaches, teachers, and support personnel. And one of the main things that came from all of this work throughout the year was that we do believe that grades should communicate what students know and can do. And we'll be, we'll continue talking about what that means. So, the academic leadership team reviewed those recommendations and they determined a revised timeline for our standards reference learning and grading. The revised timeline is K, next year being K-5 would be implementing standards reference grading. What that means is K-5 would focus on standards reference grading, they'll have a new reporting tool, and they will have a specific grading practices that go along with standards reference grading. And then, the following year would be pre-K, grade six through eight. And then, the following year would be the high school grades. So, we wanted to share with you our very clear grading practices. The first grading practice is that we would all be using a consistent zero to four-point grading scale with performance indicators. And this next slide is an example of what that scale looks like. Now, this is next year only K-5. And we wanted to point out that three on this perform, on this performance scale is proficient. And this is our target, this would be the goal for, and what we would want to be celebrating with students. That's our target. The second clear grading practice is that we will report academic achievement separate from behavior and work habits. What this means is that we really want to focus on what is it that students know and what can they do? Sometimes, when we add things to the grade, such as when students maybe don't bring a pencil or maybe when they're not prepared, sometimes teachers might add that to that academic grade. So, we're separating that out. We're going to have a place to report those types of work habits versus the academic. We really want to be able to convey to students and parents, this is what, you know, this is where you are on this, on this scale. The third practice is that scores will be based on a body of evidence. What that means is that we're, when, when we think about how we enter scores into a grade book, sometimes we think about, we put all of these scores in and then we average them. But what we will be doing is we're going to be looking at where students are according to their proficiency. So, what we'll need to do, we're going to look at a body of evidence. We're going to look at everything we know about a student according to a standard and we're going to report where they are when it's time to report that. The fourth practice is that we will not be using extra credit or bonus points for non-academic tasks. For example, when we're reporting whether students are able to add two and three-digit numbers, we don't want part of that grade to be bonus points for bringing Kleenex to school, things like that. Okay, so, at the very beginning of our journey, we were thinking we would be doing these types of things pre-K-12 and through this work group process and some of the, some of the things we've done this year. We've, we are not going to be implementing pre-K-12. Next year will be K-5. But we will be implementing a few grading practices at the secondary level that are not necessarily tied to standards reference grading. But these are things that the reporting task force group and work group members felt were very important, that we needed to go ahead and implement. So, these are the three grading practices. The first one is that any single formative or summative assessment may not be weighted more than 20% of the final grade. Really, what that means is that if a student is working through a semester, they should know where they are all semester long. And we really don't want students to get a grade and all of a sudden go from having an A to a D. That's really what this, this is intended to support. And the second one is also along that line. Finals are mandatory for all high school students and they may not be weighted more than 10% of the final grade. So, similarly, going through the semester, we want students to always have feedback and know where they are. And that final, that final semester, or the final should not determine their overall grade. The third practice that will be implemented secondary is that extra credit or bonus points for non-academic tasks are not used. So, again, bringing Kleenex, those types of things would not be part of their grade. So, for secondary, we just have the three grading practices. Secondary, middle school, high school will not be implementing standards reference next year, but they will later on. And then, we do want to invite people to our website at usd259.org backslash grading. On that website, people can look and find information about standards reference grading and there, there are also places to post questions. As far as a communication plan, we are working on putting newsletters together. We'll be working on communicating through social media. We're, we're planning informational sessions for staff and families to come and ask questions. And we're already working on some of our parent handbooks to really support parents whenever they're, they're looking at the new reporting tool next year. And we also have already begun working on our training plan. At all levels, we're already working on professional development. And we have a professional development plan for our secondary schools, even though they won't be necessarily implementing next year, but we will be working towards what does that look like and working on that together. The other thing is we know that it will be important for our families to know what it is that we're doing. So, we will be targeting a lot of our efforts towards how do we meet families and make sure they understand. We're, we're excited. We're going to be putting some of our resources in the, in the Parent Teacher Resource Center and we'll work on some of those things. Okay, well, thank you. Do you have any questions?
Yes, there are. Stan?
Does Andy have anything to add? I was just going to ask a question at the end.
I'm here for some good support and can possibly add answers to your questions.
I just had a question, kind of to clarify for the public. When we say standard-based results, what specifically are the standards? Are we talking about standardized testing that the state makes us, require us to do? Or are we talking about what is set up by each, a grade level?
We're talking about grade level, content, standards, learning standards, not standardized testing. Very different standards. And our initiative is standards referenced, meaning we are using those content standards as guides for learning. So, we refer to the standard in the feedback process between the teacher and the student. So, that's the, the referenced part.
Okay.
We are, I don't want to get too in the weeds, but standards referenced means that we are referring to those grade level content standards because we are still very much in a time-based system.
Right.
We start in August, we end in May, we go on. Standards referenced means that we're going to expose children to the grade level standards and monitor their progress towards those standards with the use of the proficiency scales. And the curriculum specialists are working to narrow that content to what we call critical content. Again, if we did it all, in the course of a child's life, K-12, we'd need 15,000 hours, but we only have 9,000 hours with a child between kinder and 12. So, we're narrowing the focus to the critical content in the, in the content area.
Couple of follow-ups. So, are we talking about, is it standards that we develop or is it standards that are developed by the State Board of Education?
Standards that are developed by the State Board of Education at each grade level.
Okay.
So, that is not a new concept for teachers. Teachers have been, you know, privileged to that information for a long, long time. What we haven't done is narrowed the focus over what we're going to guarantee any child will get at any grade level.
Does this help with individual plans of study, the grading this way?
I think grading this way helps with many things. But I do think it absolutely will tie together because children in the standards referenced process, part of the expectation and the why is that they are taking ownership of their own learning. So, while the individual plan of study is, is about the long-term view for any one child, the standard is the child has ownership and knows what they need to do next to achieve a certain content standard.
And if a child was able to get to that proficiency at third grade level, can they move on? We're not going to be holding anybody back.
Not, it doesn't, it's not an automatic. So, when we say that a child has mastered a standard, and in the examples here, you saw that a three was highlighted as mastery and that we would celebrate that. That means a child has met the grade level standard. A four would mean that that child can do more with that standard than is expected. It doesn't necessarily mean they go on to a higher grade level. It means they can do more academically with the sta, that grade level standard than is expected.
And just one last question or point. The, the whole issue of not ensuring that one teacher can put, or somebody can put that a grade, a paper is worth 80% of your grade. We're going to take a longer view, to take a bigger look at the scope of the whole work. The only concern I have, or the only thing that I'm hoping that we will address is there, especially when they reach their senior year, I hope we are communicating with our students that, that, that's, may not be what happens at college. Because I, you know, I think every once in a while we get, our students don't get, they get culture shocked when they go to college and they have a professor who does a bell curve grading or maybe a professor says this paper is the most important one. I've even taken classes where the final was 90% of your grade, even though there was four tests ahead of time. So, I, I think we have to build something in to make sure that we start expressing to the students in junior, senior year that the way we are grading may not transfer perfectly into their college experience. Is that fair?
Sure, that's fair. And that's exactly the type of questions and concerns that we want to field and make sure that we have given consideration to. I also want to say that that practice isn't consistent right now. The way that it exists, the way that we grade may look any other number of ways when they do go to college as it is. We also do know that there are colleges that appreciate the standards reference grading approach because it gives them the feedback they want to have about.
Yeah, they'd get a better picture.
Better picture of what children can know and do.
All right, thank you.
Students at that point, adults at that point.
Okay, Ron, you're next. I accidentally took you off without meaning to, sorry.
Hey, thanks for explaining that about standards. I was just wanting to find out all the newsletters, social media, is that all going to be multilingual?
Yes, we will be translating all of it.
And as far as the locations, those are just going to come out whenever it happens? Is there going to be any central location, like maybe AMAC where some parents can get to it?
We've, we've had a lot of discussion about making sure that we, we visit different quadrants.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Another thing we haven't mentioned is there's been a request for some parent night opportunities in the fall. When we get going on these things and parents have questions, that they might want an opportunity to actually convene and maybe have a parent night scenario.
Yeah, and, and thank you for explaining that and thank you for the question, Stan, because I know standards can be, when, when parents hear that, that can be a little bit of a scare thing. There's, oh no, you know, my, they don't, of course, they don't want their child to fail. But it's just something that can be concerning. So, you know, they think it's got a lot of fangs in it. And so, if we can kind of defang it, say, hey, you know, this is, this is not what you think. It's not, we're going to test your child and, and, I mean, of course, it's serious, but you know.
We look forward to the clarity it will offer.
Right, right, there you go, exactly. Thank you.
Ernestine?
One of the joys of, am I on? One of the joys of this is that students that don't master the first time, they get all sorts of opportunities to do it again. The alternative schools use mastery-based learning almost entirely. And one of the, one of the things about the, when I taught the college level, I used mastery-based learning also. So, it's not as if it isn't already in the colleges, quite honestly. Because that's the way you can make sure that there's not, what do they call it, grade expansion?
Grade inflation?
Grade inflation and that sort of thing, is it? And the thing I like about this is that a student really can say, oh, I almost made it. Instead of the mysterious, I got an A or I got a C and I don't know what, what I need to do to do better. So, I like this idea. But I want to ask you, what is going to be done to help the teachers when you have a student, three students over here who master the first time out? And you've got seven or eight, 10 students over here who are at various levels of mastery? Because you're going to basically have to have individualized learning. Are the teachers going to be given smaller classrooms so that they can handle the diversity that's going to happen with all of these various levels?
I'll always promote more FTE so we can reduce that ratio. That happens now, that, you know, teachers have that wide range of students with the wide range of abilities. And with the narrowed focus, we believe it'll bring more clarity around the instruction that teacher can provide and the groupings that maybe can be arranged in that context. That, and, and what, what we've also heard from children is that, that they can know what it is they need to do next. So, if I'm, if two or three of us are working on this particular standard and whatever, we're at a two, we know what we have to do next to get to mastery level. And so, that might be a logical grouping for differentiation. But differentiation's already expected. Differentiation is difficult. I think this will bring some clarity around differentiation even. But we do have a lot of training to do around how can I manage the differentiation? How can I, what are various ways to look at groupings with students and so on? You're exactly right, and that's one of the things that we need to consider. When we, when our team is fielding the questions that get submitted on the website, if you get a chance to look at the website and there's a, there's a field that you can submit your questions to, our team is managing and screening that daily to collect the questions so that we can produce answers to those questions, either chunked in themes or whatnot. But we're also using that information to form our training. What do, what are we got, what are we perceiving needs to be taught? What are the teachers telling us they need based on their questions? So, all of those considerations are very important to us.
And I am excited with the opportunity to give teachers extra stuff for the kids that pass it right away, that they don't get bored, they don't get enri. They don't decide to do other things with their spare time. But having some ways to enrich that's not just piling on work. And so, I think this is a great opportunity and I'm glad that we're doing it. And I'm glad we waited until all of the kinks got worked out in other places so we can go right in slick as anything.
I have a couple of questions and I have a follow-up to Stan's question. The four-point grading scale that's consistent, that's something we've needed for a long time. Because if you go to school A, you may get an A, and if you go to school B, you may get a B with the exact same work. How are we going to assure that continuity for our mobile students that they can move across schools and still feel like they understand what's going on with grading?
We recognize that in the professional development opportunity, opportunities, there's going to have to be collaboration among teams. There's going to have to be collaboration at building level to discuss, what does this practice mean? What does this standard mean? What does this level of scale mean? So, those conversations and collaboration are going to have to take place at the building level so those, there's some vertical alignment. But then, they're also going to have to take place horizontally so that we do some collaboration, third grade to third grade. So, across the district, we have some conversation and collaboration about the meaning of things and get calibrated with the meaning of those things. So, that, that is, that's in our thinking, that is in our plan about how we need to, how we need to do this. Time, prioritizing time in our trainings, we're, we're looking at how we do that as well.
So, that training has started or is in the works so that? Because if we start in the fall with elementary, we're going to have to have that work done.
Exactly. The, the training that has occurred so far is, for example, book study. We've had, we've had leadership, face-to-face interaction with professionals out in the field. We have book study happening between our instructional coaches and teachers and administrators. We have teachers and administrators reviewing that website that we've shown you and we're fielding those questions. We have a couple of slated dates in the summer. We're creating some more opportunities, standards reference grading 101, if you will, that we know we're going to need to provide some extra opportunity and then some intentional district time in August. So, there's a number of things in place. There's a number of things already happening to front-load this. And then, like Mrs. O'Toole said, that secondary's not off the hook. These are their training years and we need every bit of time. We need to take advantage of every bit of time we have with them to front-load their learning.
Second question is the difference between standard reference and standard-based. And you referred to standard reference saying that it was a guide for learning and it could be used, we'd use proficiency sakes, scales and so on. But there is confusion because we've had standards-based for a long time. What we haven't had is the reference piece that, so could you explain the difference?
Do you want to take this one? Either way.
So, there are different definitions for standards referenced and for standards-based. And one of the things that we did right away was we, we decided this is what we're going to, this is how we're going to define this. So, our definition that we're using for standards-based is when a student masters, mastered a certain set of standards at each grade level, then they would move on. And then, they would move on and on and on. But we, in our district, we're using standards referenced, which means we are really, we're, we have a time. We start first grade here and we end first grade here. So, we're going to be working, we'll be enriching, we'll be providing lots of different opportunities for students that meet the standards and will work to differentiate. But at this time, we are not standards-based in the sense that students will move on after they master the first grade standards.
And that kind of ties into Stan's question. Because, because, and at some point, and I know we're not there, and I really even hate to ask this question, but I think we need to, as a board, have an idea of what your thinking is. Are we, we're Are we, we're getting this into place first, which is a huge chunk. But at some point, are we looking at possibly moving to, if I have a child and they're in fourth grade, but they can do math at the seventh grade level, making that a standards-based as opposed to a standard reference?
An example of how that is in place presently, currently, is, for example, with, with gifted IEP, for example, where a child's individual education plan might be standards-based. Meaning maybe I have a strength in math and I'm whizzing through math and I am passing those standards. And I'm, and I'm going to move on in that area because, because it's, because my plan is standards-based. Our general plan for K-12 is that we are standards referenced. But at any time, and this is, this is true now, at any time, there could be an individual plan, either remedial or enriched, where the learning is accelerated or modified or, and those kind of things can happen already. Again, what standards referenced process is going to do for us is bring clarity to that even more so.
Yeah, I think it's that clarity that's the secret to this, is that everybody's on the same page with grading. And I don't feel like we are now, and that's not our fault, it's just the system that we're in. And this is changing of a system. So thank you very much for your hard work on this. It's going to be exciting to watch as it moves through the process. Thank you. Julie?
You already gave us one example. But how are you going to communicate with parents specifically? Because this is going to be a radical change for them. And, you know, we don't want them to only learn about it when that report card comes home and it's very different from what they're, you know, what they've seen in the past. You know, and particularly at the elementary level, well, probably at all grade levels. But a lot of interaction between parents and their kids about, you know, about their performance at school. So can you give us, give us some information on how you're going to educate or inform parents about the changes that are happening?
You want to take this?
Sure. We, we, we've worked really hard on what our website. That's one place that we'll be asking parents to go. But that's just a small thing where they can go get more information. But, you know, tonight, we're talking about it here. We have a, we're, we're hoping to see an article in the newspaper very soon. And we, we're planning like weekly things that we can start sending out in social media. And we really are trying to, to get things into newsletters that are sent home at each individual building. We have posters that are getting created, we have some, lots of different things. So we're really, we've had, we have a lot of things that we have in the works that you'll be seeing.
Great, thank you.
With the target audiences. So we know we have information that needs to go to parents. We know we have information that needs to go to teachers. We, you know, we have information that needs to go to students. So we're trying to differentiate the message and the content and the clarity of those products.
Excellent. Sounds like you've really thought through this. So thank you for all your work. Mike?
Yeah, on page 11, you talk about the grading practices. And it says that the finals are mandatory in high school and they'll be no more than 10%. And you can't, you talk about, and I'm raising this for two points here. You can't get extra credit for non-academic tasks. Are there things that you can get extra credit for that are academic tasks?
Here's, yes. So here's an example. And it's not necessarily that we, you know, it's not, we don't want to do anything like that. But we really have to change our, the way we think about that extra credit. Because most of the time, the extra credit that we're giving, we're really just providing multiple opportunities to show what we know. So there's bringing Kleenex, which is non-academic. But then, for example, on a spelling test, when teachers include three or four extra answers, really what we're doing is we're just providing more opportunities. So we may think of it as extra credit, but in a standards reference system, they call it multiple opportunities.
Okay. And the reason I bring that up is the 10% final grade. If I'm a high school senior and I've got a 1.5 grade and I can only get 10% of my final for my, for my grade, does that mean that I fail the, the year and I have to repeat?
So one of the things that we heard a lot from the students when we talked to them about the grading practices is they really wanted to know what it is that they need to learn, what it, what their expectations are and how that their grades are being calculated. So our goal is that at all levels, students have that, that feedback all of the time so that well before that final, they would know what they needed to do. And hopefully, they would have had the, the support that they needed.
So basically, by mid-year, it's their senior year, they should understand where they're at. And it'll be a decision that they make whether or not they complete the year on a high note or a low note.
What, what is being proposed in this way would, would mean that there should not be a surprise, one way or the other. I shouldn't all of a sudden go from an A to a D or vice versa. It should be more current, reflective of current learning and mastery learning.
Mike, and I hate to ask this question, but I got to because it's in the back of my mind. If, if I'm a student that's failing and it's coming down to zero hour, don't look at me like that, Steve. And, you know, it's going to take extra staff time to get me to where I need to be. How are we going to do that? You know, if, if I'm really hurting as a kid and I realize this semester I'm in trouble, you're going to have to throw resources at me. Is that, is that, am I correct or?
I think that is correct. And I think that we, we do that now as teachers, we do that, we help students. I think one of the great things about standards reference grading is where in the past, we would have been averaging all of those scores. So sometimes students find themselves halfway through the semester and there's no way they can get the grade they want. In a standards reference system, we're looking at what are the standards you need to learn? And we're giving grades based on where they are at that time.
Okay. Now, my, my last question, I, I don't know if Stan hit on this or not, but how does this relate? You know, we've been with the 4.0 system where it's A, B, C, and D, or A, B, C, and F, or however. And how are the universities taking this to translate it? You know, California, I think, has a five-point grading system. We have a four-point grading system. Are we hurting our kids by not having a five-point system?
I was just going to say there'll be a conversion that'll go from these proficiency scale numbers, a conversion to a grade. So our students will still have a grade point average. And when universities are receiving our students, knowing that it's a standard referenced scenario context, they'll know that that GPA has some, what meaning that GPA has.
Okay. So when, so the records will, will say something probably different than what we're seeing here if we're transmitting them to a, an outside source?
Yes, and I think you may be referring to, in some, in some districts, students can get higher than a 4.0.
Right.
So that is also something the reporting task force group brought up in, at the beginning of the summer. And that's also one of the things that we still have on our to-do list to talk about is what might that look like with this?
I just don't want kids missing out on scholarships because they're getting a 4.0 when they could be getting a 5.0 or, and it balances out.
And, and we will be translating our scaled scores to letter grades because we know that we need that, we need the letter grades and the GPAs.
All righty, I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Okay, Ernestine?
Well, I was just going to say that the kind of extra credit that can sometimes happen that is, like the student has already shown at that three level, that they understand and have mastered, say, understanding the angles in a trapezoid or something of that nature, that they can come back and demonstrated that, that at a higher level, maybe by creating a trapezoid, the dangles from the ceiling, so the teacher can now show it to everybody. Or, you know, and has all the strings across it or something. The same thing in any of the subjects is that they can bring it up. The mastery level is just that you got to get this far or you don't go on. Where the, they could do the extra credit with the other stuff. I was going to tell you that in my experience, the ones that are most likely to be upset about, oh, oh, not upset, that to take advantage of this 10%, maximum for the final exam, are going to be those really good students who already have been admitted to college, who are in the last month of their senior year and they go, woo-hoo! It doesn't matter what I get on this final exam, it's only going to affect 10% of my grade. And they blow it off. I have seen that happen. Because they've already gotten into college, which is what they think that all of high school is for.
We might have to have some character conversations.
That's right. Ben?
I just wanted to get on this, on this party because everybody else has commented except me. It just, it reminded, this discussion reminded me of a high school chemistry teacher I had, Ronald Frery. He's up in South Dakota, he's retired now. But he used to, he let us resubmit our chemistry homework until we got it right. And I remember that was extremely, extremely important to me, especially as I entered my career as an engineer. To get it right is the important thing. The path that you take might be longer, but I think this is good work. So thank you.
I'd like to give you an example that I shared today with someone else. Start of the year, I take an assessment and she takes an assessment and I get a 20% on it and she gets an 80. And then we take another and I get 30 and she gets an 80. And then I get 40 and she gets an 80. And finally, I get 80 and she gets an 80. Average that all together, my score is going to be really low, but in the end, I mastered. And I'm penalized for having started at a different place than where she did, instead of recognized for mastering the standard in the end.
This is exciting. Thank you very much. I see no more speakers. I, I think we want to watch this carefully as we move through it. I'm glad you made the decision to start at elementary and then move it up over the next couple of years because middle school and high school are the ones that are going to have to process this a lot more. And because it is a change to their system, more so than it is at elementary even. So good work. Thank you. We'll be watching carefully as we move through it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item, Mike.
Consent?
Ernestine?